Hello, everybody. Welcome back to another episode of Making Action Happen. I'm Sarah Blackhurst.
And I am Brian McCain.
We've got a special episode for you today, but before we get into that, I want to say a shout out to one of our most avid listeners, Cole Kelly. Hello, Cole. Later in this episode, I'm going to ask you to help me find another word, and maybe you can even get Mean Connor to help you find a word, but we'll get into that in a little bit. Before we do, the most important thing we need to talk about today is the special session and what happened with all of that. So of course, we have the incomparable Mike Beasley with us today to give us a rundown on all of that. And as far as our listenership goes and our members and a lot of the people that work in our arena, the word of Beasley is not the word of God, but it's real, real close. So Beasley, thanks for being with us today. We appreciate you being here. I know that there was a lot of work that went in. I was with you in Trinidad about a week or so ago, I think, and ahead of this session. So we have, I have a lot of questions, as you might imagine, about this session, but I was really excited to hear how much tax dollars we were going to save and how wonderful this package of bills were, but I can't figure out exactly how that works. So if you could talk us through that and then also just sort of walk us through how this package of bills differs from HH that was just resoundingly defeated by Coloradoan voters.
Well, it's good to see you. Thank you for having me back. You know, I'm, you're, you're the canary in the coal mine in explaining what just happened since the session just ended yesterday, but I'll try and make this complicated topic as easy as we can to understand. And I think that'll start with the complexities of HH, right? And so when we follow this weed down to the root, HH, which I'll come back to in a second, was on, on, on top of the, many of the proponents of HH repealed in 2020, the Gallagher movement. And that gave some, some property owners, both commercial and residential owners, some protections against these large waves in the value of property in Colorado. And with that gone, we have a high wave or a great increases in, in the value of property. And so that meant that people were really feeling and seeing in the future years, high, high property tax increases. To give you an example on that, year to year, from, from 23 to 24, we're looking at about a $4 billion increase in property tax revenue coming into government, right? That's a lot. It's about a 31% increase in revenue. If, we'll see if that number holds going into next year when the actual revenues come in, but you're looking about a 31% increase in property tax revenue coming into government coffers based on these huge increases in value. So hopefully that, that makes sense.
No, it does. I was taking notes and I don't, I've not seen anything as easy as that you just explained it. So it's $4 billion that because when, when they rescinded Gallagher three years ago, the property tax and value, all of that was going to bring in an extra billion dollars into the state coffers or four billion, four billion into the state.
Government coffers, not just the state, but in government, because property tax is really not a state revenue, state government revenue, it's a local government revenue.
Oh, okay.
And so, and, and two years ago, in Senate Bill 238, or back in Senate Bill 238 from a year or so ago, the legislature saw that coming and the governor called for some relief. So they temporarily used, they temporarily lowered what you were paying as property taxpayers. They, they temporarily lowered that using state general fund. But when we saw that that bubble wasn't going to burst in terms of what we were, you know, the, the increase in revenue and the increase in value, they decided to refer HH to the ballot. And instead of just using general fund, they decided to, to do what most, no one has really been successful at ever doing across the state and that saying, hey, how about giving us some of your Tabor refund? We'll use that to lower your taxes a little bit, but you're still going to pay more in property tax. We're going to keep your surplus to a large extent, and we're going to use it for government spending. That's how I explained it at our kitchen table.
So let me ask you about that, you know, being ignorant in taxes and, and budget comparatively. I don't understand how us giving Tabor back would reduce our, reduce the taxes and, and save the, I don't understand this at all. I don't, I don't understand how you redraw the lines there.
Well, it's about government spending, right? So the state was saying, look, we don't mind, you know, local property tax is not a function of the state. It's not their responsibility. And so local governments and taxpayers are feeling this pinch, and we will, over the, over this last two years, we'll backfill with some of our general fund, but the proponents of HH were suggesting that it's not sustainable. So we're going to have to look beyond the state general fund and hop into the Tabor surplus. And we'll let you have some of that, and then we are going to take the rest and put into the budget. That's one way of explaining it. And the voters said, you know what? I want my Tabor refund, leave it alone.
Yeah.
And figure out a way to lower my taxes.
So let me ask you, let me ask you really quick. Was, was just the state spending less money just not an option?
Well, again, it's not really a state function. It's local governments. And, and so the state is basically saying, where, in my words, we're doing you a favor, taxpayer and local governments. We're going to use our state general funds that come from things like incomes tax and severance tax and gaming tax and things like that. They don't really get property tax at the state level. That's a local function. That's a local revenue stream.
Was, was there a bill, do I remember this right? Was there a bill this last session that gave the counties the authority or the ability to do that on their own? If it's a local issue, didn't they say that they could go ahead and just take care of that on their own?
Local governments can right now reduce what they're charging you or assessing your property. They can adjust, you know, that at the local level and give some relief. You heard some testimony in the special session from like the commissioners in Yuma County to say, leave this alone. Let us deal with it. But we have about, we had about 13 counties in Colorado, because one of the things that Senate Bill one in the special session did is it took the deduction of your property tax assessment. Remember that bill took, just took $15,000 off the top of what your property is assessed. They've now adjusted that in the special session, Senate Bill one, to $55,000. But what if in a community in rural Colorado, for example, where the average price of a home is 200,000, and then you're, so they were actually, where, where most counties in Colorado have a 20% or more increase, not just in the value, but the revenue, you had communities that weren't seeing that type of increase, and they were, they were actually digging a hole. And we had about 13 counties that had that. So we worked with a large coalition in a bipartisan way to make sure that at least those, those 13 or so counties are going to be made whole, just in the area that we're talking about. The bills in this session only dealt with 2023 property tax year. And so, and I'll come back to that in just a minute. So, so kind of in, in, in summary, Senate Bill one took that, takes off the first $55,000 of your assessed value of your home, adjusted 2023, and it, it adjusts the single and multifamily residential property rate from six point, seven, 6.765% to 6.7%.
So we say, so what the savings was, was twofold, right? So it went from 15 to 55 and then a point 065 reduction.
Yes.
Again, I don't understand the math, but.
Let's call that, let's call that between friends, $240 million.
Okay.
That the, the state will backfill. And then they're also backfilling schools to a tune of an extra 146 or so million dollars. So, so if your listeners are sitting there and they're wondering what's going to happen, if you're in a community that's value is below that, or, you know, that revenue stream, they're going to be made whole to, to, so those 13, and some of those are in the Action 22 footprint.
Several, right, yeah.
Like in the San Luis Valley and places like that. We're going to hold schools harmless. Districts like police, fire, ambulance, EMS, districts, hospitals, they'll get 100% backfill in 2023.
That was a big, that was a big lift too, because that was not originally in there, correct?
It, it was not in there, but there was a lot of support in the House to do that. There was a struggle in the Senate, but, you know, at the end of the day, they ended up, up doing it. And so that is kind of the simplest way to explain some really complicated policy. And, and so critics would say, well, the legislature really just did the same levels of revenue, give or take, that HH did. And so the voters said no to HH, and the only difference was, is that you didn't really use severance. We did in Senate Bill 238 from a few, couple of years ago.
Right.
And a couple of sessions ago, and that was done in a bipartisan fashion, right? So Democrats were mad at Republicans for saying they didn't want to use Tabor surplus. And Republicans were saying, look, we did vote for that as a way to get relief, but the voters basically told us, don't do that again, when they voted 60, 40 against HH. So it was like watching two ships pass in the night, you know?
Right.
And so there was no bipartisanship really in, in this session. They see this very differently. My, my own personal view is I've never been successful or thought it was smart to tell the voters they were, they were stupid. And so.
Yeah.
So I think, so then what they did then is they passed a bill, House Bill, Special Session 1003, that creates a 19-member property tax task force or commission that will include folks like commissioners, the state property tax administrator, assessors, I think organizations like the apartment association or the Realtors, teachers' unions, CFO from a school district, those kinds of folks. We're going to lock them in a room between now and around the end of March to see if they can come up with something. So for those of you who are listening, you know, I don't, I don't have a sportsbook app open, but I'm not going to bet that they're going to come up with an easy solution, because, you know, it's taken us, you know, over 100 years to get here, and I don't think we're going to fix it in the next, you know, 150 days. My fear, my fear and my prediction for you, Sarah, is that this task force is largely, you know, they have a huge job ahead of them. My fear is you're going to see a conversation, not in the legislature, but outside the legislature, that ultimately the voters will decide this through a citizen initiative. And, and there's already one on the ballot that would limit property tax revenue at 4% increases. So if, if you were, if you're someone listening who's a school superintendent or a county commissioner or sit on a water district or what have you, you will know your budget better than I do. But I have to imagine that kind of limitation is worse than what HH was ever going to do. And so I think the proponents of HH are trying to say, look, we have this on the ballot. We mean it. My own personal view is if the election were tomorrow, that limitation would pass. And, and so hopefully the conversation isn't just in the legislature, but against these dueling initiatives, because we also saw an initiative filed last Thursday or Friday from a, a group of Colorado business CEO types through Colorado Concern that, that got into additional reductions on the commercial property tax side, because when we just talked about Senate Bill one from the special session, the majority party didn't want to do anything on the commercial side for reasons that they can explain themselves. And so you've got all these dueling initiatives, and I think it's going to be an absolute mess if, if, you know, my guess is if you've got dueling initiatives that actually make it to the ballot, the voters are going to say no, and they're probably going to throw some people out of office next November. But I'm just a casual observer of the process.
You always say that, and we appreciate your casual observations. So let me ask you, let me go back to the commission really quick. How well represented are rural, the rural communities in Colorado on that commission?
Well, they'll, I think rural folks, there'll be rural commissioners for sure. There will be a mayor. I don't know if it'll be rural or not. It depends on how that is selected. You'll have a property tax administrator in Joanne Groff, who I think is the smartest property tax mind in all of Colorado, but hands down, who former legislator from Adams County, who loves every county, been to every county in the state and knows what she's doing. There are renters everywhere in every county in this state. And I think the, if it ends up being the apartment association, they'll have that view. But I, I think rural concerns will be heard the way this is constituted, for sure.
Well, thank you. That makes me feel better. Let me go back to one other, and then Brian has a question for you. As far as the Tabor refund, can you, can you walk us through, because that was the main thing, right, with HH? How did, how did Tabor refunds fare through all of this?
Well, look, I mean, we're using Tabor refund to backfill in Senate Bill 238 from a couple of sessions ago. And people see that also being reinforced in this special session, Senate Bill one, right? Because we didn't undo that. And so there is Tabor refund to a degree in, in these backfills to local government, this reimbursement to local governments. And that's just a fact. But taxpayers are still looking at, they're still looking at a, a large amount of, of refund. One of the four bills that passed this session was, because we're looking at about, about $3.28 billion to be refunded in the 2023 year to taxpayers, the largest amount since Tabor passed in the early 90s. And the, the legislature took that and whether you are a billionaire and paid millions of dollars in taxes, or you're someone who paid $500 in state tax, you're each going to get $870, $847 per taxpayer. And so that, and a joint return would get about $1,694. Remember in the last year, we, a year or so ago, we got that check from the governor for $750 a person. So even though we're up quite a bit more, they try, in terms of Tabor surplus, they tried to give more Tabor surplus to folks on the lower end of, of economic income.
So that redistribution is what helped to pay for like the, the renter protections and, and those kinds of things, right? Is that, am I getting that right?
No, I'm talking about Tabor surplus, the check that you're going to get in the mail.
Right.
Even though the Tabor revenue is up, let's call it 1.2, 1.3 billion dollars from year to year. Last time you got $750. This time you're going to get $847 for the 2023 fiscal year. So, so again, whether you paid $5 or $5 million in income tax, for example, that you're each going to get $847 per taxpayer. Now, they did, the other bill that they did was about 30 billion, excuse me, $30 million worth of, of rental assistance to go into the rental assistance grant program that's managed in the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. And that's on top of the money that they already had. One of the frustrating things for me as someone who's a huge supporter of the Department of Local Affairs, and certainly with the legislature, is that, you know, and I, we, we support it, creating an $11 million expenditure in the budget that just started on July 1 to get that money out the door in rental assistance, and they still hadn't moved a nickel of it. And so that really irritated legislators, frankly, in both political parties, whether they voted for that expenditure or not. And so the pressure right now really is on the Department of Local Affairs. And you've heard me say that in the past on these podcasts, I think DOLA is the best place in the whole world, because they do so much good from a, from a state perspective. But the, the pressure is on them to get money out the door and whether it's housing, or in the divisional local government, that's where I mentioned Joanne Groff a minute ago, that's where the Division of Property Taxation, we owe it to the Department of Local Affairs to support them in every way, because they're just helping people. And so I want to put a plug in for them. They've got a huge job ahead of them and a lot of pressure, and we should do everything we can to help them.
And they have a brand new director, of course, Maria DeCambre, who was, worked closely with the governor in his office for the last few years. And so she's, she's got a big, a big job in front of her. Okay, so again, for us, oh, wait, you had a question, Brian?
Yeah, just a couple. So with Prop HH, one of the things in it was the portability of the exemption. Was that talked about in the special session at all? I think it was a senior exemption.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, thank you.
It was. There, there were a couple, one bipartisan proposal in the House that died and another Senator Liston's been trying to do it, you know, forever. I, I think there's a legitimate, first of all, I do believe something will happen in the, in the session starting in January on, on the portability. There's a serious legal question about, you know, whether or not this has to be referred to the voters to do, or if they can do it just through statute, because it was, you know, a referred measure years ago. And, and do we need to amend the Constitution or, and/or just change statute? And so that was part of the burden in getting this done in, in a four-day special session. But I do believe there will be, it's one of the few things I think, I know for a fact, both political parties agree on, and I do think they'll address that in the first part of next year.
Okay, that was a few questions we had, that I, it kind of seemed like that was a carrot or a way to, you know, motivate people to vote for it more and like, hey, this comes with it. But that was one of the concerns, if that would come up again or when it'll come up again. The other, I had a few, now I can't think. My, my issue with DOLA is that it seems like a lot of times they don't get to do their job. Like, it, it seems that they're kind of understaffed sometimes, and they have to jump through all these hoops. Like, DOLA's great, but just let them go. Let them do their job. And that was my, you know, thing with DOLA. We love DOLA.
We do love DOLA. And I, I think there's a lot put on them. It feels like every year, there's a lot more that they are asked to do without really the time or the, or the human resources to do it.
Oh, here's the other one.
For your listeners, when you think about, when do you interact with state government, right? It is when you're sitting in traffic, behind some orange cone, probably. It's when you go get your driver's license. And it is, and especially if you live in a rural community, the technical and financial assistance that the various divisions of that department give. And as the example I gave you in Trinidad is a good one to that group, Sarah, where, you know, they added more FTE two sessions ago to the Division of Housing than I had altogether.
Yeah.
In the entire division. So they pretty much doubled the size. And, you know, government's having trouble hiring people as well. And we just owe it to them to, to give them a little bit of a break.
Right.
And to help them any way that we can. And there are local governments that are ready to go to work for their constituents and to help, whether it's the gaming funds in Teller County, or, you know, the housing funds throughout the San Luis Valley or in, in Southeast Colorado. These communities are hungry for it and ready to go. And so we're optimistic these changes at DOLA are going to be good.
So a few months ago, I thought, you said that Prop HH would not pass. I said, I think it's going to pass just because people are going to see their tax bill and that increase, and they're going to look at it and say, you know, of course, I want to pay less in my property tax. It's out the roof right now. But it didn't pass. So you were right. But the one that I, I heard a lot that I, I didn't think about, the biggest naysayers and against voting for Prop HH was, it's a stat, it's statute, right? And I heard it from a, two dozen people that said, I don't vote for that. I don't care what's in it. The second I see statute change on it, that I, I will not vote for it. And that was one factor that I didn't think of when we were discussing this a few months ago, why I thought it would pass. But I thought that was interesting that I heard a lot of that from people. It's like, I don't vote for those.
Well, you know, and I would say if folks don't want to amend the Constitution either.
Yeah.
And then people read Tabor. And, and, you know, when you think about Tabor, there are big counties within Colorado, Jefferson, Arapahoe, Paso, that haven't debruised.
Yeah.
And, or, you know, gotten themselves out of Tabor. And so I, I think there's a lot of skepticism. There's only been one statewide change, a referred measure from the legislature back in the early 2000s, 2005, that a Republican governor and Democrats in the legislature worked on together. They built a coalition. They literally drafted it in public. I'm still in therapy from that experience, because I worked on it. And, 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 you know, and it was still a really hard fought election. You cannot do these things with one party.
Yep.
Behind closed doors. And I wanted some, give them some break, because, you know, it was in a compressed timeframe. But if you're going to change Tabor, if you're going to ask voters to, to modify their Tabor refund or their tax structure in any way, you've got to really bring everybody in. And that did not happen here. And I know I make folks, the proponents mad when I say that, but it just didn't happen. Well, as someone who worked on a team that did do it, we were successful, and that should be the model moving forward, in my opinion.
And that was the answer to my second question, was when was the last time in the state government that voters approved something statewide like this? And you said it was in 2000.
Ref C.
Yeah.
Ref C back in, and then, you know, it was, and then they turned down Ref D, because that was about building buildings and bonding and that. So they, you know, our voters are not stupid by any stretch of the imagination, and they do read. And, and, you know, there were folks concerned that the blue book language would, to your point, would say, oh, my gosh, it's property tax relief. Let's go for it. Because they're seeing, again, like I just said, $4 billion in increase in one year, on a top of, you know, $12 billion that are being paid in 2022. That's a huge increase. But the voters, basically, the voters, the voters were very clear. And I think the message was heard, but the issue wasn't completely addressed in 2023. This is, this is a Band-Aid. I know I'll make folks mad when I say that, but this is a Band-Aid for a larger conversation in 2024 and moving forward. And we'll, we'll have to see what the voters do.
So putting on our political hat, and we have a huge election coming up next year, we've said in conversation to many people that the reason why the state went the way it did is because it was a vote against Trump. It, it wasn't a vote for one side of the aisle's agenda. It was basically a vote against Trump. Now, with Prop HH failing like it did, do you think that was kind of the message to the Democrats to step back and say, hey, wait a second, maybe we actually got to re-strategize on this because we have an election coming up? And also, depending on who the presidential candidate is, that's a big one, which Trump will be on the ballot in Colorado, that just came through, what?
Like a day ago.
Friday, Saturday, something like that. So do you think this is, on the strategy side, is this giving them a moment of pause to kind of reevaluate how they're going to win this election and what they're going to do going forward?
You know, I can't speak for them. I can tell you what, what I've observed. I, I do think they got a message. But remember, the legislature, we do about 700 bills or to 1,000 bills every session. They only have to do one thing, and that's the budget.
Yeah.
And the, the lifeblood are these tax revenues, and I think people are paying attention. And I think the message was, which is not a message that's uncommon, is, I know you have money, and I want, I want, I want you to invest in things like schools and public safety and healthcare, et cetera. But beyond that limit, I want that money back.
Yeah.
It's that simple. And so the voters have, you know, repeatedly said no to debruising at the state level with that one exception. And, and even that revenue didn't even come in because of the economic downturn in 2008, right? So they didn't even see what the voter, the budget didn't even see what the voters had approved. And so it remains to be seen. You saw Kyle Clark from Nine News, and you've seen some editorial pages basically saying, you know, voters are not stupid. And I'm not saying the proponents are saying that. I'm saying that their commitment to spending and those priorities in the budget outweighs just about everything else. And so we have to find that balance. And right now, we're just not, policy and the politics is not balanced right now. And so I don't know. And, you know, if Democrats don't lose seats in the legislature, why would they pivot?
Yeah, yeah. And that's, well, we saw, we talked about it the last episode, you know, Pueblo went straight Republican for the first time ever in the local elections. It was, I think, no incumbent won, and every Republican won in a local election in Pueblo. And we're talking not countywide, city of Pueblo, which is what, 24% Republican, 37% Democrat?
Right. Well, to be fair on that one, there were a couple of unaffiliateds, but they were ones that had left the Democrat Party.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and that won.
I think one Democrat was elected, and that was just because there wasn't another unaffiliated or Republican, we'll say conservative, because it was a nonpartisan race.
Yeah.
So that was the only reason why a Democrat got in there in Pueblo.
I, you'll have to remember the name. I can't remember that. But I remember it, that it was, it was, they were unaffiliated.
There's a lot of change. There's a lot of change going on, right? And Jefferson County, you know, I grew up where the Democrat strongholds were places like Denver, Boulder, and, and Pueblo. And Jefferson County is now the county with the largest turnout in this last election, and it's one of the most steady for Democrats, right? And so there's a lot of shifting in demographics and political changes. And the truth is, it doesn't matter whether you're Republican or Democrat or an affiliate, you just need to talk about what voters want to talk about.
Right.
And address their issues. And so, you know, I still have hope that the legislature is going to continue to work on this. Again, on tax policy, it's not just a conversation in the legislature, it's going to be through these initiatives. And we really need to watch both as taxpayers, as the Action 22 region, in the both the public and private sectors. I was on the phone with the most tenured economic development professional in Colorado just before I got on this call, and she was telling me that, you know, our commercial property tax rates that are so bad and so high that we're losing, you know, bringing in business. You heard the state demographer just say a week or so ago, for the first time in our, this is the lowest growth for Colorado in terms of migration that we've ever had in the history of our state in the period that we're in right now. And it's not just one thing, it's a number of different things. And we have to just figure out what we're going to, what we want to be when we grow up.
How, let me ask you this, and this is kind of a setup question, I guess. But, you know, how is the average voter going to be able to pay attention to this and how it impacts them? I know we do our show, and we try to do our best to get the information out there. But the average person, one, they're not aware of it, or two, like, they don't know where to find it, other than the blue book. And the blue book always comes out towards the end.
Yeah.
And I got to go plug the camera in. Hold on.
Okay.
Keep talking, keep talking. I'll be right back.
You want me to keep going?
Yep.
So I think the answer to that, people need to be engaged, and they need to, they need to, you know, read their local papers. They need to not necessarily read social media, but read, read their papers, follow Action 22. Ask their county commissioner when they see him at a town hall meeting or at the grocery store, what is going on? And really just sharing information is, it's the basic, I know I sound like a nerd, but it's the basic way we maintain a democracy and, and move our state forward policy wise. And this is really going to be an important election. We're going into probably the most consequential year we've had ever at the state, local, and federal levels of government.
We agree with you on that one. I've been saying that a lot. Before we move on to the other bill that, or the other, the Senate Bill 002 or whatever, that was in the special session. Just one last question on that. How, how much is this discussion, since this was just a Band-Aid? How much discussion are we going to see, or how much, how much of the energy is this going to be taken up in the 24 legislative session?
I, it's the issue, right? Because people now, as they, as we move back, people are going to start to see their escrow documents from their mortgage company. They're over the next few months, and they're going to be watching the legislature to say, you know, where is my Tabor refund? Are you funding my schools? People pay attention to their schools. They're going to ask questions about, what are you doing in terms of transportation? They're going to be asking questions about, you know, how, how are we addressing crime? Correction, reform, that type of thing. And so I think the voters are paying attention. I do. And I think you saw that in the last election.
Agreed. Well, we'll be talking a lot more about this as the session goes on. And the December 5th, we'll kind of have a little bit better idea what that, what the docket's going to look like. We won't know for sure, but we'll have a little bit better idea when everybody has their, their bills in, or the legislature has their bills in. And it's December 5th. Is that, is that deadline correct?
Those, I, yes, generally speaking, yes. And I think we'll see fewer bills in the next session, but you're going to see more sensitive conversation. And it's not just about taxes. Again, it's school finance, it's about renters' rights, a lot of environmental policy. There's a lot of conversation on the Colorado River. It's going to be a big, big session. And, you know, I appreciate Action 22, engagement, our board, our members. It's really a strong voice for not just rural Colorado, but for good policy. And I want to commend you. And as you said, you came down to the legislature on Saturday, which was appreciated. We just need to keep engaged because I know it sounds corny, but if you're not at the table, you will definitely be on it. And so we're at the table.
Yeah, no, we're honored to be able to do it. We're honored that, that we've got the trust of our, of our membership and our board. And, and just that we can stand up and say a few things. Okay, so talking about standing up and saying a few things. So the other bill that was being proposed was, and, and it was kind of a weird thing to be in this special session, but it needed to be done, it needed to be taken care of, and nobody going in really objected to it. We're like, huh, okay, that needs to be done. It was a cleanup thing. And it was to expand EBT to, EBT usage to kids who are in summer school. And so that seems simple and straightforward enough. But, you know, we are in Colorado, so a couple of interesting things happened. And before I say anything, I wondered if, if you wanted to have a comment on, on sort of the way this went in a very bizarre, almost a fever dream kind of direction. And that was with Elizabeth Epps, and then ultimately with Ron Weinberg. So you were down there, you were kind of observing all of this, and we're only seeing video and comments afterwards. So do you have, can you give us a rundown of what exactly happened?
So, look, you know, I'm a very strong proponent of folks' First Amendment rights. Representative Epps is, she, she's a registered Democrat, but she claims just yesterday on Twitter to be in, I forget what she called it. More of a, I don't know how to describe it, but she doesn't necessarily relate to the Democrat Party, and she's not a socialist. She's none of the above, I guess. And so she has very strong feelings about what's going on in the Middle East related to Israel and Gaza, and that genocide is occurring, to quote her. And so she took a bill. There was tight, tight security around this session because there were lots of protesters protesting that. And so she basically twisted an amendment that, in my words, basically said that, you know, we weren't going to buy food like this if it were dates from the Middle East or from Gaza. You know, which is like saying, you know, yellow is related to purple. It was complete baloney. But she offered an amendment, like every legislator gets to do, and she tried to debate it. It was ruled that it didn't fit under the title. And so she just engaged in civil disobedience every way she could. Now, some people would say she felt strongly about it, which she definitely does. And some people would say it was a publicity stunt related to a documentary that HBO and others that she's worked on have released. I will just say this, I mean, everyone has the right, I've never seen in over 30 years, a member of the legislature go to the balcony and scream at members of her own party. I felt it was an embarrassment. I can tell you flat out that if a Republican had been complaining about whatever it is, that they probably would have ended up in handcuffs in the back of a state patrol car. Right?
Yeah.
And so I think that they, the majority really struggles. I really want to commend people like Representative Duran.
Right.
The majority, who's got the worst job in the whole world, the Speaker of the House. I think they're really struggling on what to do when a member just wants to shut the place down. So people want to, you read a lot and talk about the right wing. This is an example of the left wing and where they're going in terms of making their point and civil disobedience in the legislature. Both parties are better figure out what they want to do, because we stood there for hours waiting for this nonsense to end. Not that her views aren't, I don't respect her views, but that is not the place and the way to do it.
At least she didn't pull a fire alarm.
Well.
She didn't pull a fire alarm. It almost would have been easier, you know, and more respectful of the process. And she wanted to shut down the functions of government. I don't buy that.
Yeah.
I mean, we can understand, I will understandably complain about when people disrupt on, from January 6th to people reading bills at length. They're, to my mind, those are all really poor examples of civil disobedience, and I, it drives me crazy.
So this was interesting, right before this sort of demonstration, when she, when she was speaking. She's, she referenced a colleague who had earlier said that this was a repackaging of HH. And then she got up and she was setting up what her arguments were going to be with regard to these EBT funds. And she said, she referenced that, she, I referenced my colleague, blah, 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 and they aren't wrong. Or I don't disagree that this was a repackaging. So they stopped her right there. They pulled her aside. She came back and she said, I want everybody to recognize that I have forgotten the last thing I said as I segue into this, which begs the question, did they pull her aside and say, you cannot say that this is a repackaging of HH? I wonder if that is part of what really angered her as she moved forward and the remarks that she, that she made. I have no idea. I would not be able to, I can't read her mind, and I don't know what that was about. But that was really, really interesting to me. And I saw that exchange, kind of that back and forth was on, was on a Twitter or an X feed. I'm sorry, on an X feed. So then what happened after that is they gave her a lot of leeway. That her amendment failed on one night that would have extended to today, the session. And that failed. And so she came back with another one the next morning. And I'll leave it to our listeners to go back and look at some of the, of the X posts that she had prior to the session yesterday morning, which was Monday morning. So eventually, Ron Weinberg, who is part of the Republican caucus and a Jew, asked if he could stand up and, you know, say something, if he could, if he could respond to that, you know, the assertions of genocide and so forth. Now, again, this was about feeding or giving more access to EBT funds to Colorado kids who are in, who are in summer school.
Yeah.
But she wanted there to be provisions that would say that you can't, you couldn't use those EBT funds to buy hummus or dates. I think were the two things that were brought up.
I wouldn't, I, I appreciate your, your, you know, she hijacked a conversation. And it, again, it's like saying yellow is related to purple. And, you know, she just threw a saddle on a horse that she could ride to engage in her civil disobedience. That's it.
Yeah.
And she made that argument up out of thin air. And, you know, we're in politics, we do that all the time. But we don't do it, we don't do it in the way that she did it. It was, but that's, you know, she, she believes in her whole heart, everything that she said.
Yeah.
And I respect her right to say it. I absolutely do. And Representative Weinberg is, you know, really a good, very conservative guy and a calming voice in this debate. And the fact so little respect was shown to his point of view. But that's what she wanted to do. And she went up into the rafters of the gallery of the legislature. And there were people that shared her view. They, they believe government is broken. They believe it, 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 it is sanctioned genocide and bigotry, and she believes it in her whole heart. Question in my mind is, and I don't have a problem with that, but is that the way to do it? And, and so she just has to get right with that. I will just tell you that I've seen folks escorted out of the chamber for a lot less than that. And the majority party is going to have to figure out how they want to allow that type of civil disobedience. But you can see on X or whatever it's called this week, members of her own party, super critical. Even members that share her view about what's going on in the Middle East, for example. And so she got exactly what she wanted. We're talking about it.
Yep.
We are, she's raised awareness of her point of view. And Representative Weinberg, for example, shared his, and that's kind of the definition of civil disobedience, isn't it? Although she's trying to affect change, but I have never found the state legislature very effective on foreign policy. So I'll leave it at that.
I, I agree with you. I thought that when eventually he was, he did get through his remarks. Representative Weinberg, his remarks got me in all the fills. But I real, it really brought the question to me, how would I, how would I describe what she was doing? And I thought, hyperbole, that doesn't get it. Hubris doesn't get it.
It's, you have to look at it this way.
Hottiness doesn't get it.
She's very passionate about this issue. And when you're this passionate about something on either side of it, all logic goes out the window.
Well, and I might express my passion if I had a Netflix documentary coming out.
There is that too, but you're going to see, we're seeing a lot of this now, and I think we're going to see more and more of it. And you're right, Mike, that this is one that they really have to figure out how to keep that controlled chaos up there. Because this is, I think, the first of many. And with everything going on in the world, you're going to see it a lot.
Critical. There were folks like Senator Exum and Representative Kennedy, the Speaker pro tem, the majority leader, the Speaker and others. I mean, I've never seen that. I mean, I've seen protests at the legislature and the galleries in particular, but by your own member.
Yeah.
Where people like me were worried about some of these legislators letting the protesters in the building when I shouldn't feel unsafe in the State Capitol.
Right.
Make your point however you want, but you shouldn't make us unsafe. That building should not, people should not be afraid to access their government in a way to conduct business. And I just, I'm offended. And, but at the same time, she's really a smart, engaging person. The question for me is, you know, was that the way to do it? And we can't, we can't have people afraid to come to the Capitol, and folks felt afraid.
So let me ask you this. This is reported, and if it's true, I think it was a really beautiful moment, actually. As Representative Weinberg was speaking, of course, he had members of the caucus up there, standing up with him. And as it went on and on, Marianne Goodland reported that the rest of the House, all the other, the Democrats that were there stood up as well, which in, in support of Weinberg, is they stood up so that they were offended by also by what, what Epps was doing. And is, is that what happened?
Absolutely.
And I think.
And that's what I said, you know, members of Representative Epps's party were condemning her pretty strongly. Representative Ortiz comes to mind. I mean, if you.
I saw that.
Look what he said. And I mean, that, that guy is a bona fide war hero. You know, very strong liberal.
Right.
And he really objects to the way the process was hijacked. And I thought his comments were very thoughtful. And that's, you know, many folks of her party shared that view. So again, I think that that, I've never seen this. I don't think the leadership saw it. I'm sure they'll put some thought into how to do that and how to deal with it. And then frankly, what to do with members who do something like that. In terms of censure or taking them off of a committee or, or whatever else. But again, I don't think legislators and the public, even the ones like me that are paid to be there, should not feel unsafe in, in, in the people's building. And I'm confident that they'll, we'll hear more about this.
Well, 20 feet outside the people's building, it's a little unsafe, but once you get in there, it should be safe.
Well, and I understand.
We'll get into that.
We won't talk about that right now.
Marianne Goodland also reported that there were, the night before, that several members of the Senate, including one of our Action 22 members, left the floor and to come in and meet with some of the protesters on that one. So I think this is, this is going to be really interesting. I'm, I'm a little bit worried that there needs to be some, some protocols put in place to avoid the hijack of the, of the process again. Because there's going to be so much this next session. But I want to also make a point that when Weinberg was up there and just beautiful moving remarks that he was making, that the rest of the House stood. making, that the rest of the House, um, stood up with him. And, and Marianne said that every single Democrat and every single Republican were standing up with him at that moment. And I think that that, um, also should, should be a portent of what's going to happen next. So.
Look, I mean, they have different views on the policy, but they all do respect, uh, the legislative process in that place. And that was not shown by Representative Epps, in my opinion. She's going to have to get right with her own voters and with her leadership. Um, I'll leave it at that.
Yep. And we're seeing it federally too. You saw where Senator, is it Higgin?
Oh.
Challenged the guy to fight in a hearing. Did you see that, Mike?
So.
I did.
Yeah. And, and that, that kind of, I was with Scott, what, like, right after that happened. And, and he just shakes his head, and he's like, I am so glad I'm not there anymore.
Scott Tipton, right?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, from January 6th till now. And he brought up a good point. He goes, this is an institution. It doesn't matter who you are. You respect institution. It's possibly the greatest institution in the history of the planet. And for them to kind of turn it into a circus, both sides, it's just, again, he said, I'm glad I'm not there. And I totally agree with him.
So.
It's a very challenging time, for sure.
So let's wrap our discussion with, um, the big takeaways, uh, from this and what, mainly that we all need to be watching, um, after January 10th?
The takeaway is, is that, um, for 2023, you largely got what HH was going to give you if you had voted for it, and that there's going to be a more intense conversation, um, uh, in the legislature on tax policy and on state budget priorities, especially in the first quarter of next year, Jan, you know, January through March. Um, and that my own prediction to you is that they're going to have a hard time coming up with any solutions. So people outside of the legislative process are going to put things on the ballot, um, that will, um, uh, take this conversation directly to the voter. And I think we're looking at one hell of an election in 2024 from a federal, state, and a local, uh, perspective. And so I still have faith that we'll figure it out. And, uh, as a, as a state and as a, as a public, and we'll do, we end up doing the right thing.
Well, all of you know that we're going to be watching this really closely, and, uh, we don't have a better, um, navigator for all of this than we have in Mike Beasley. Mike, we appreciate you so, so much. Um.
I just have two things to add towards the end.
Okay.
Before we close the show. One, um, the statewide, the DMVA, we did have our initial meeting to open up a one-source veteran shop, kind of a one-stop shop or one-source. I call it one-stop shop, but it's a one-source center. Um, we had the initial meeting with Pueblo County. It looks like the DMVA actually has the funding to go forward with that. So we're in the process of that. What that means is you're going to have a state agency working with the federal agency and all the local agencies and nonprofits for veterans' benefits and veteran services in Southern Colorado. It's not, it's going to be in Pueblo, but it covers all of Southern Colorado. And that's huge, because that also brings a little more revenue in for this, and maybe some more employees, VSOs, that sort of thing. So that's, that's one good thing that I applaud the state on taking this initiative. They did one on the West Slope six, seven, eight years ago, and it's been a huge success and has helped so many people that it's good to see that on this side of the mountain and outside of Denver and Colorado Springs, where we so dearly need it.
Yep.
The other one is with the VA. There is some controversy going on with that on the federal side, on the VA Eastern Colorado Healthcare System. Their leadership team is no longer part of that, which kind of sucks for us because of the outreach they were doing to look out for the rural vets. We'll see how that changes. I'm in meetings weekly on this now to get updates. So as soon as I learn something, which I have not learned anything on it, but one of the under secretaries was there, I believe, last week, part of an investigation. So I'll keep everybody updated on that. I know Commissioner Haas, he asked me to come down December 4th to talk to their American Legion, because they're going through their issues as well, because again, they're in the new Mexico VA, they're not in the Colorado, which makes absolutely no sense whatsoever.
Correct.
Um, so keeping ear to the ground, I'll put more information out on our website with that. And again, if you go to, we now have a website for the show, which is makingactionhappen.com. So you could go there and find everything. And then real quick, the views and opinions expressed on Making Action Happen do not necessarily reflect the views and opinions of Action 22, its board, or its membership, except for Prop HH. I'll just throw that out there. We'll expose that.
Yeah.
But, but that's, that's my two cents, my ending two cents.
Thank you. Thank you, Brandon. And I'm going to brag on you a second. There really is nobody, um, better in this region. And, and I would even argue the state that, uh, it, for advocating for veterans to really know what's needed to be done than you. I mean, you are absolutely the leader on that. And I appreciate it so much. And I think most of our veteran community knows that, and they appreciate you so much. Um, Chad Vorthman, I know you're listening, and it was great to see you, and you deserve all the accolades. But I just wanted to assure you that the Chad buttons, um, those have all been dispersed now, and I'm not ordering any more. But that's mainly because I've heard rumors that they are now available on Black Market, um, to get Chad buttons, and they're going for quite the, quite the price now. So I just wanted to assure you of that. So, Mike, thanks so much for being with us. We appreciate you, um, more than, more than we can say.
Well, thank you. Uh, good to see you. You take care.
All right. Bye-bye.